Would you want to please stand? We're going to ask Dr. Lee if he would be pleased to pledge some respects on this here. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll call a regular meeting of the Coffee County Department of Education. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have someone here for the invocation. Anybody? All right. Here we go. Here we have your invitation. "My Father, we thank thee for that many blessings, keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other ourselves indeed; or we pray that you will guide us tonight as we do the work of this Coffee County School System here for the boys and girls of Coffee County. And just be with us as we have this meeting and as we lead this meeting and just be with all of Coffee County and put a hedge of protection around our young people, Lord, in our whole community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen." Okay, we need to advise what an order of agenda. We'll read a motion for adoption. Mr. White.
Second Professor.
All right. Yes, sir. Under leadership capacity, we want to recognize the mission of the Coffee County Schools, and that's destination graduation for college career in life. I think it's important to remember that that's why we exist as a school system, to help our young people reach destination graduation for college career in life. And that's our sole purpose as a school system, is to serve our children, our young people here in Coffee County, and prepare them for their future. So our vision is creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. And I really like that word, equitable. We want to make sure that we're being equitable for all of our young people and all of our community and everybody in Coffee County. And then also excellence. Excellence is something that we strive for every day. We want to be the best possible school system that we can be and provide our young people the best education we can possibly provide. And I believe that's what the people of Coffee County expect. So that's our vision. Governance and leadership, we have special recognition. Our first recognition is our Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Tonight I want to recognize our Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition winners. The purpose of the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition is to encourage students to develop enthusiasm for and an expertise in writing, to provide a context, to celebrate their writing successes, and to recognize student achievement in arts and academics. This prestigious competition has been engaging Georgia students for more than two decades and is open to any student currently enrolled in the Georgia Public Schools, grades K-12. The competition is sponsored by the Georgia Language Arts Supervisors and the Georgia RISA Network with support from the Georgia Department of Education. Tonight I want to recognize the students who were selected as the Coffee County School System winners, as well as a couple of students who have been selected by Okeechobee RISA District. And those students who are recognized, who were selected as RISA District winners will represent our RISA District in the state competition. So from Ambrose Elementary, our kindergarten winner, Bailey Carver. Bailey is the daughter of Shawn and Amber Carver, and her writing was titled Cooper. From Indian Creek Elementary School, our first grade district winner, Jackson Wells. He's the son of Antron and Renee Wells, and his writing was titled The Magic Cat. From another student from Ambrose Elementary, our second grade winner, Luke Castellos, and his writing was The Perfect Puppy. And you can see, he was recognized as the second place winner, or the second grade winner for the Okeechobee RISA District, and his writing piece will be entered into the state competition. From Wayside Elementary, our third grade winner, Brantley Adams, who's the son of Jordan Adams and Alana Shugley, and his writing was titled My Dog, My Cat, and I. From West Green Elementary, who, this student participated in virtual learning this year, Orin Collins. He is the son of Stephen Collins and Yolanda Collins, and his writing was titled Dr. Dmitri Abdulov. From Broxton Mary Hayes Elementary, the fifth grade winner, Taylor McKinnon, who's the daughter of Marguerite McKinnon, and her writing was titled Trapped in the Grass. Sixth grade winner, Mackie Thomas from Coffee Middle School. She's the daughter of Jamie Thomas and Samantha King, and she is also being recognized for the sixth grade winner at the Okeechobee RISA, and her writing piece will be entered into the state competition. Seventh grade from Coffee Middle School, Haley Beasley, who's the daughter of Jessica Williams, and her writing is, was titled Love Is a Perplexing Mix of Emotions. I don't think I told you Mackie's title. Her title was, her writing, that's going to be entered into the state competition, was titled Her Story. Our eighth grade winner from Coffee Middle School, Jamie Hutchison, who is the son of William and Josette Hutchison, and his writing was titled Good Deeds. Ninth grade winner from George Washington Harbor Freshman Campus, Glenn Matthew Osteen, who's the son of Jason and Ashley Osteen. His work, writing piece was Engines of War. We didn't have a 10th grade entry, so our 11th grade entry from Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, Jessie Hutchison, who's the daughter of William and Josette Hutchison, and her title of her work was Amazing Grace. And our 12th grade winner, Caitlin Hutto, who's the daughter of Jamie Hutto, and the title of her writing piece was Bleeding Sydney. I read a lot of the writing pieces that were entered from the schools. All the schools selected winners and sent them to us, and they were phenomenal. Dr. Tucker also helped read some of those, and Mrs. Spade, and we were just blown away at how well these students write and how creative and just capture your attention. You just want to read more, but the story ends. We're very proud of them. These students will be sent a certificate to their schools as being recognized as our system winners. Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That's awesome work by those students. Great job. All right. The next item is the school counselor, social worker appreciation. Ms. Clayton?
Thank you, Dr. Lee, and board members. I think we'll all agree that 2020 was certainly an unusual year for all of us, and our school counselors and our social workers really went above and beyond, especially when our students came back to school, because they had to deal with a lot of different things. And the month of March is the official recognition of school counselors and social workers. So we wanted to bring them to the forefront and show you photographs of all of them and thank them for what they do. When I was thinking about this group of employees, I think about, they're certainly advocates for our children, they're the voice of our children, they are often the parent for the children, they make sure that everything's okay. They also help them with their career plans, especially the older counselors, on what they're going to do and the pathways that we have at Coffee High School. But all of them serve on the crisis intervention team that we have, so if there are deaths in the school system, any type of sadness, they immediately go to the schools and work with the children. So they're a wonderful group of individuals, so we wanted to introduce them to you tonight. First of all, with our social workers, Becky Toth. Becky serves the high school primarily. Next, we have Misty Nash. And finally, we have Sharon Williams. So we only have three social workers in this school system. They do have folks that work with them, but they go above and beyond to help our students. And also things like clothing, food, they make sure that they have all of that, so we appreciate everything that they do.
And I would like to point out, Ms. Clayton, because a lot of people probably don't know it, but our social workers are on-call 24/7, even over the weekends, and if we get a, they share call. And so, much like physicians or others would share call, they take turns, and if something tragic happens, or if we get one of these alerts through our network that we have, Dr. Bays, or myself, or Dr. Newell, or we can contact our social workers that's directed through the Special Services Department, and they hop right into action after hours to try to intervene with students who are facing some kind of adversity. So they really are, they do so much that people don't ever see or know about.
Behind the scenes.
Yeah.
Very good stuff. And going into our counselors, starting in Ambrose Elementary, we have Ms. Anna Harris. Broxton Mary Hayes, we have Katrina Paul. Eastside Elementary, Heidi Welsh. Indian Creek, Mr. Ronnie Blackstock. Nichols Elementary, Jennifer Wilcox. Satella Elementary, Valachia Sermons. West Green Elementary, Rebecca James. Wayside Elementary, Lisa Spivey. Coffee Middle has three counselors. The first is Austin Lee, Brooke Runker, and Jill Pruitt. Freshman Campus, we have Sarah Lauren. Coffee High, we have Ginger Vues, James Louden, Rachel Ho, Jennifer Day. And at Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, we have Miss Emmett Nation. They all do an exceptional job with our students, so let's give them a round of applause. Next recognition, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rhonda Dorsey first. It kind of ties into our school board recognition with the gifts that all of you have gotten, and two of our teachers are the two that work behind the scenes.
Good evening. We first and foremost would like to thank each of you for your support with our CTA programs, with our CTSOs and our students who do compete. Y'all have been fortunate to allow, or we've been fortunate for y'all to allow our students to go and compete and travel when they've had face-to-face competitions this year. We have found out with some of the organizations, a lot of systems are not allowing any student travel of any kind. So I thank y'all for allowing that. The students, we went with a group a couple weeks ago with HOSA, our health group, in Atlanta, and those seniors, that's all they wanted to do was to go to the convention because they've not been allowed to do any of that. So it was a great experience, they had a great time, so I thank y'all for that first and foremost. And I have with me tonight Drew Williams and Spencer Highsmith. They teach our Ag Mechanics and Animal Science at the high school, and several months ago, y'all approved for us a purchase of a piece of equipment, and I wanted those two gentlemen to speak a little bit about that. And each of you have an item, and we have Dr. Lee's son also. And this was from that device that y'all, our machine that y'all purchased. I'm going to let them talk just a brief minute about those.
And Dr. Lee, originally we were just going to use a small word with a diamond, they say. What ended up happening, we went through a whole day's, or half a day's worth of training, and we made all of the board members, well, first off, we actually made yours first. And then we learned about the scale and size aspect, and so whenever we'd come out and hear it was that small, I was like, oh, man! And then we started making the board members, and we made theirs bigger, and it's like, man, now we got to go back and make that. You're the lucky person, but eventually it's too. So now what you can actually do, you can have one on your desk here at the board office, and now you can have one to hang up at your house, too. I do just want to say thank y'all for that opportunity. Our students really enjoy it. Couple of things we have already created for it. We're actually made a sign at the Billy Walker Agriculture Center that'll actually be surrounded the picture frame. And then we, one of my students was approached by Ms. Melody Williams to design a logo for the Engineering, Agriculture, and Mechanics Academy. And so I showed him the YouTube videos over how to design a project. He completely designed the whole layout of that sign by himself. I mean, that's the type of students and the caliber of students that we're working with, and it's gauging and engaging them in ways that meets their needs, that furthers their education. And I can't thank y'all enough for allowing us to acquire this piece of equipment so that we could captivate and acquire new students into our program. Just the other day, we actually had our academy board members from the, for the Engineering, Agriculture, and Academy members, and some of the student ambassadors on that team, one of them was specifically in the engineering pathway, so he doesn't really take any agriculture classes. Whenever we were showing our board, or showing the advisory board, everything we had going on, that student came up to me afterwards and said, how do I get in that class? That's something that I want to learn how to offer. And so it's thanks to y'all and thanks to your support that we're able to broaden our student horizons. I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams now.
I'd also like to thank y'all, too, for a piece of machinery. It's taken our fabrication to the next level. It's really intrigued the students. I'm fortunate, I teach AgMed 1 and 2, so I teach the beginner levels. Mr. Highsmith teaches AgMed 3, and they're like, hey, how did I get to that? That's what I want to get to. So it's keeping them engaged and it's taking it to the next level, and I just want to thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
And I do want to add, on this device that all of you have, a student created, designed in our engineering class, all on his own. Mr. Hill, who teaches that class, he came in, his comment was, he was too old and fat to even overpick a pine cone, and he didn't want to spend the money to buy the little machine. So he jokingly found the picture and told one of the kids, he said, hey, I need you to figure out how to make one of these. And he told him he needed this piece of metal, so Jerry went and bought it, or Michelle went and bought it, and from there, the 3D printer and the young man, the one that Mr. Hill has in his room, has just about been worn out because he worked on how to make it more efficient and better over time. So he's been working on this project three, four weeks now to perfect his device in our engineering class. So this was student-designed, student-made, all his engineering there. So I did want to brag on that, and there's a lot of other items in here from our CTSOs.
See that Miss Thomas's students made? See, it's in the front?
Oh, yes. And this one also is one that, it's a device or a machine that has been purchased several years ago, that y'all also have in here that our students, one of our teachers in the class, they've made for y'all. And so each of our CTSOs and CTA teachers, different ones. The students, a lot of the stuff is student-made and/or put together by the students in those pathways. This year as your, thank you for all that you've done for us and supporting us over the year and last year and previous years as well. And so I do want y'all to know, they really do appreciate y'all. There is in here, middle school, they've created the little pay boards for y'all. So it's all student-made items that they've put together and created, so there's a variety of things in here for y'all. And so I do appreciate y'all, but if you are out and about and you want to come tour, we got a lot of exciting things happening in AgMed, engineering, nursing. It's, I'm really excited, I hate to say it, they have turned me on to a new area, and I think a lot of our students, and I think when our community gets to come in, like we had the other day, to see what is happening, I think a lot of our parents will really be delighted, because one of those business partners whose child has attended CCA and graduated from there several years ago, he said, I do a lot of donations to the school system. I support one of our areas, our pathways. He said, I've never been in this school and had no idea this is what all went on inside this building. So I think we've got to sell our story and brag on our students and let them know the things we actually have going on. So I was very proud of them.
Ms. Dorsey, I want to thank you all for what you're doing in the CTA department, the gentleman in the Ag Department, what you're doing with Ag Mechanics. I went out to Premium Peanut today, you know, of course, Premium Peanut's now one of the largest, or they say the largest peanut processing facility in the world, and they're using robotics out there to do a lot of the work. And so it's not, when we talk about Ag Mechanics and careers in Ag, it's high-tech and it's engineering and using modern equipment and such as that. So thank y'all for what you're doing.
We actually have one of those former students working there, and he's wanting to come speak. He was one of our members there, Oscar Fabian. He's wanting to come speak with our actual engineering course, our teacher-students, and we're hoping, once COVID's over and we can get touring, that we can go out there and take those students for tours out there, just so they can actually see some of the things we have going on. I think there weren't a few that would allow under 17 on their floors.
And I would also like to add, you mentioned your advisory boards. I had a parent call me last night. He's an attorney and a judge, and he said, I just want to call you and tell you, he said, I'm not calling you to make small, I'm calling to tell you that you need to be proud of what's going on at Coffee High School. He said, I went to one of these advisory board meetings today at Coffee High School, and he said he was so impressed with what the staff is doing to organize the academies at Coffee High School. So thank y'all for that. He made a point, he said, I got to call you and tell you that this is just exciting. He said, everybody, you could tell they were focused, they were prepared, and what they were doing, they really believed in. So thank y'all for what you're doing.
Thank y'all, and y'all have a good evening.
We appreciate it. It's good to see you like clothing and enjoying.
My wife's going to be excited about getting this. She doesn't tune into these, she doesn't know.
Well, I did want to say to board members that I know I speak for all of our schools, all of our staff, that we do appreciate you and all the hard work and the commitment, and especially this past year, it has been so difficult, and your support has helped the schools get through and the students. And I think all the gifts that they brought to you, they're showing you how much they appreciate you, so we hope that you enjoy them. And I just had to brag on the flowers, too. I think next week there's going to be a flower sale, freshman campus. But this one is from our teacher apprenticeship program, and talking about growing their own, their future teachers. So this is just one of the gifts that you're going to get. So thank you all so much. I know Dr. Lee's has certificates for you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. And at this time, I'd like to read a proclamation from the Governor of the State of Georgia. School Board Appreciation Week, educating our children is the key to our state's continued prosperity and to opening the doors of opportunity for every citizen. And Georgia's continued growth requires dedication to excellence in our schools and commitment to providing trained teachers and needed tools and resources to all schools. And Georgia's Boards of Education work together with the school systems they lead, parents and community leaders, to set a vision for their district in which students can learn and become productive contributors to our society. And the men and women serving on school boards in communities across Georgia have demonstrated a strong commitment to quality in public education by securing adequate resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnerships within the community. Now, I, Brian Kemp, Governor of the State of Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 15th through 19th, 2021, as School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. So I want to thank all of our board members for your service and what you do, especially as Ms. Clayton's already mentioned during these challenging times, and people just don't know the extra that you have to take on as a Board of Education member, and we appreciate you all. And I'm going to give you your certificate. Ms. Clayton, did you want to have a few words about what's in their kit there?
In your kit?
Yeah.
No, in your kit. Ms. Dorsey said a lot of this in here, and I didn't notice until Ms. Miller just pointed out, because Georgia on the front of it. Something healthy. I'm not sure what they just said. There's lots of gift cards in there. I think every restaurant in town, you've got a gift card. You can enjoy eating, but we're going to have to help y'all take this out to the car, because there's a whole tub full of stuff here, and they make cookies. So enjoy.
Thank you for helping to organize that, Ms. Clayton.
Oh, you're welcome. It was fun. Next time, you're going to tell them they have to bring six, or seven, eight.
Well, let's give our board members a round of applause. At this time, we will move forward with our agenda, and under resource capacity, we have the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is the minutes from our meetings last month. Board members, you've had a chance to review those minutes. There's no objection, we will approve those as part of the consent agenda. The next item on the consent agenda is the financial report, and you'll see our end-of-month fund balance is $24,309,169.19. Renaissance Learning Purchase Agreement. We're asking the board to approve the purchase of Accelerated Reader. It's Renaissance reading, but it's Accelerated Reader. We will be adopting Accelerated Reader in all eight of our elementary schools, in our middle school. We will be using Accelerated Reader. Many of you may remember using that years ago, or your children used it, and we moved temporarily to a different program through Schoolastic, and now we'll be re-adopting Accelerated Reader after about seven years of being involved with another program. But we're excited to get Accelerated Reader back in our schools. And that purchase is for $249,602.24, and that's over three years that we'll be paying that for Accelerated Reader. Surplus property, we have, the technology department has asked that we declare 50 computer monitors and 50 projectors that are no longer in use, and they've been replaced, so it's antiquated equipment that still may have some value, and we will put that up for auction on govdeals.com. So after tonight, if any Republicans look at that, they can find it on govdeals.com. We're also asking the board to approve the purchase of five school buses, a total of And these buses will be paid for through a combination of the state has allocated us through the QBE formula, enough for approximately three of the buses, and then we will also have CARES 3 that we will use to fund the other portion of the purchase. Purchase of five school buses. And then we have the maintenance vehicle purchase. It was mentioned in our work session earlier tonight that we are replacing a 2002 model maintenance truck and also a 1996 model maintenance truck. So it's, we've gotten our So it's, we've gotten our use out of those two vehicles and it's time for them to be replaced. So, um, we're asking the board to approve, uh, the purchase of these two trucks. And the low, uh, quote comes from, uh, Alan Virgil Ford. And it's for $31,864 for each truck, which is a total of $63,728. The next item on the consent agenda is the adoption of the 2021, 2022 school year. And this was surveyed by all of the staff. And the majority of the employees chose this calendar. Fifty-five percent chose Calendar D. And so we're asking the board to approve Calendar D tonight. And that will give us a school calendar for next school year. We're almost there, believe it or not. So it'll be good to get '21 behind us and get into '21, '22. So, all right. And then, uh, that's all on the consent agenda. Any other questions?
Sure.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Lot?
Approved.
Thank you, board members. And then next on the agenda, we have the $1,000 retention supplement. And this is being, uh, awarded to the Coffee County School System from the governor's office. Governor Kemp has, uh, made it a priority to, uh, try to retain employees in education. And, uh, so this will be for all employees, including our, our, uh, contracted custodial. We'll also be getting this $1,000 retention supplement. So this is our full-time and part-time employees and the contracted custodial that will receive this. So asking the board to approve this tonight. And we will try to get it out. Yes, sir. And we will try to get that to the employees by Friday of next week. It's, uh, we're gonna try to have it to them by Friday of next week. We just got the, the proper budget information from, from the State Department today. It's the, uh, account numbers and such. So we will try to get it to everybody by Friday of next week. Any other questions? I move we accept the governors. Mr. President, Ms. Wade? Great. Thank y'all. And our employees certainly deserve this. And, uh, they're gonna be excited to, uh, listen to you come. So thank you, board. And as I said earlier in the meeting, I do wanna formally thank our governor and his office for making this happen because it was a discretionary fund that he could've done pretty much anything with from the way I understand it. But he chose to give this to educators in Georgia. Also to our local representative, Dominic Ricca, who works closely with the governor and works closely with the governor's office. So we're gonna thank them for helping our, our people get this. And our board, because there are about 31 positions that will be picked up locally that weren't, weren't part of this. So how many of them is there?
I think 35.
35. So thank y'all. All right. Executive session, none, none needed. I would ask the board to approve the personnel recommendations as presented. Any other questions on the personnel? Ms. Wade? Ms. Wade? Hold the vote. Thank you. I do have a question. Yes, sir. Are we a T-C-B building? Where are we at on that? We've got a plan, uh, architect's, uh, draft. And we're, we're ready to come back to the board with the draft and, and, uh, and then get it out for bid. We're pretty close to being ready to put it out for bid. But we've got a little more work to do on, on the plan, so. Ready to adjourn? Oh, yeah. All right. As part of the personnel, I would like to announce, uh, our new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, uh, Dr. Christina Tucker. If you wanna come forward, Dr. Tucker? We're working with you and congratulations. Yes, ma'am. All right. Speech?
I'm sorry. Um, first of all, Ms. Miller will be a tough act to follow. But I have to tell you, I thank God for continuing to bless me and you, your continued support in this whole system and me. And, um, I look forward to the opportunity to work alongside you to move the system forward to great things ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.